School newspaper and the May Festival. He has been on either the honor roll or merit roll every grading period. Great job. Outside of school, Jacob loves to hang out with his new dog Apollo and his family. He plays baseball and video games and has a great love of music. In fact, his favorite class at school is music. Jacob's current 5th grade teacher, Mrs. Thompson, recently sent the following message to his mother. Quote, "I just wanted to let you know how much I enjoy having Jake in the classroom. He makes my job so easy. He is a great worker and willing to keep trying new ideas and strategies until he gets it. He's willing to listen and be patient so that I can reteach him. I appreciate that I can rely on him to help others and still stay on task. He is very well-mannered and shows respect to everyone and that is hard to do sometimes. He displays so many great qualities as a young man that I can't wait to hear about the awesome things he will do in the future." From Mrs. Thompson. Jacob, will you join me and help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And you can join me up here. And do you want to tell us who you brought with you tonight, your family and your school?
I brought my mom and my grandma. And I brought my principal, Ms. McIntosh.
And what kind of dog is Apollo?
Oh, he's a...
It's a pit bull, boxer, lab mix.
Sounds like a fun dog. All right. Thank you to Jacob, his family, and his principal for bringing him out tonight. Please keep up the good work, Jacob. We look forward to hearing about your future as well. With that, our next item on the agenda is community and school reflections. Does anyone have anything they would like to share?
Mr. Reverend Walker, I had the opportunity to share with Congresswoman Marshall Fudge in her town hall. And what I want to emphasize with the town hall is Congresswoman Fudge is not only on the educational committee, but she's also on the agricultural committee. And on the agricultural committee, she would like for us to consider a resolution dealing with the reduction of those persons who will be eligible for free and reduced meals. We know this past summer that sort of changed, so we need to be supportive of not reducing, but widening that because we know poverty and hunger are a real thing that happens not only in our area, but the Cleveland area as well. Had the opportunity to share in the Akron Council PTA and the Urban School Board's empowerment series number two, module one. And there was a lot going on there, and they talked about framing and effective discourse about equity. And I would like for us to, at some point, all of the board members do an intercultural conflict-style inventory so that we can get to know what our personality is as we relate to one another, especially as we deal with conflict and other aspects of being board members. Had the opportunity to go to Kenmore Garfield's College and Career Academies as they began to lay those out in that area, and we'll have more about that this evening. And then to see the Kenmore Girls, Kenmore Garfield Girls Basketball Team sharing. There are ten steps to equity in education, and I won't go into all of them this evening, but they deal with design, practices, and resourcing, and how we can use those things to better educate not only our children, but educate the board and educate our community as well.
Thank you, Reverend Walker.
I wanted to expand on the cultural conflict area in which he spoke. Having attended that particular workshop as well, some of the key elements that I captured were cultural conflict is a type of conflict that occurs when different values and beliefs clash. These may be strongly held beliefs, and applying intercultural competencies in an educational context happens when our success in achieving our goals is better served and we are able to more deeply understand culturally learned differences, recognize our commonalities, and between ourselves and others act on this increased insight in culturally appropriate manners that will facilitate growth and education and learning amongst diverse groups. So I thought that was very, very good assessment of cultural conflict and how we can come together by understanding each other and where our differences are and meet at our commonalities to get things done. This could take place from the leadership aspect all the way down to the child in the classroom, and it would help sensitize each and every one of us so that we could better understand those that we work every day with.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I'll add just a little bit to it before I add some more. That consulting firm that does that is Dr. Perkins, and he is the, if it was, or I don't know if he still is, the head of Education Department at Columbia University. And he's been working on a lot of initiatives for a number of years throughout the United States and abroad. He's been to numerous countries where they called him to do studies and things of that nature. So I think that would be something if we even brought his company in to deal with some of this, so we can help learn about ourselves as well as help others to learn about themselves so we can move forward and do the things that are best for our students. And then I also had a chance to go out a couple places this week, last week. One was the job for our graduates 30th year celebration. It was a nice celebration. It was 30 years. They've been in Akron Public Schools for 30 years since 1987, where they started in Bookdole High School as one of their pilot programs. And they have served about 8,000 students here in Akron Public Schools over the years, so that's a lot of students giving some help as far as jobs, hunting, tutoring, all that they can give to help the students. So it was a very nice program, and this is a program I thought was really good. And they're adding to what they're currently doing to their program is what they call INN, which is investigating in new neighborhoods, which we know in our North Hill area, there is a lot of refugees, and they're going to focus on the refugees and their offices over there. So that's going to be a good piece to help our students here in Akron Public Schools and their families. So I want to congratulate them on 30 years and want to continue to let them know that the work that they do is valuable and hasn't gone unnoticed. Next, I wanted to talk about, Mrs. Baylor and I had an opportunity to travel to Washington, and we went with her for two different, one conference and the other is to go on Capitol Hill to lobby for public education. And the one was the Equity Symposium. It was very good, a lot of good information. There were two very good speakers that I thought were really good. The one was Robin D'Angelo, who spoke about equity in all areas of education and talked about individual biases and how our biases get in the way of sometimes making decisions that we should make in a particular way, but we tend not to because of our biases getting in the way and not being open-minded. And the other person was Nicole Hannah Jones, and she talked about segregation and racial inequity, and she went back from segregation and she brought all of it to date, which was very good, and it talked about, there's so much there. I think that her, as well as Mrs. D'Angelo, could have probably did the conference, just the two of them, because there was so much, and they really could have dug deeper into that. So that was very good. And then we went on to go to Capitol Hill, where we did get a chance to see our Congresswoman Marshall Fudge. She was there in the office. We got a chance to talk to her. We didn't get a chance to talk long because they were ringing the bell that she had to get down to the floor to go vote because, you know, they were going to shut down government, and so they all had to run to vote. But we did get a chance to also have a lengthy discussion with her Chief of Staff, Mrs. Maisick, which she was very, very, very knowledgeable about education. She knew about a lot of different things. She knew what was going on in Akron Public Schools. She could tell you what was going on in Cleveland Public Schools. She can tell you a lot. And it was very nice to talk to her, but she was very impressed with a lot of the things that we were doing here in Akron. And we did invite her to come to Akron to see what we're doing in Akron Public Schools. So hopefully her, as well as Congresswoman Fudge, will get a chance to come and see the schools. I know Congresswoman Fudge was here last week when we were in Washington. She came there, and now she's coming back again. But she is really in tune with education, so we want to make sure we always continue to keep her in the loop because she is always focusing on education. So we were able to do that. And then the last thing I have is that we were able to, we had breakfast on Capitol Hill Tuesday morning, and that was with Sherrod Brown, Senator Sherrod Brown and Senator Rob Portman, and they were open to a lot of our questions. We had a plan, but it didn't work because people kind of got off the plan, but it was still good information that we gave to both of them, and they gave us, once a nod that they would look at what we were talking about and move forward. Then we went to Sherrod Brown's office, and we met with his legislative assistant as well as his legislative fellow. And the fellow, he is from Toledo, Ohio, so he is from the Big Eight, and it was nice to be able to talk to them because they wanted our input as well, is what are we doing and what's happening in our district, because they were looking at the urban school district, the Big Eight here in Ohio. So that was something we weren't really scheduled to go to, but we got pulled into because they wanted to hear what we had to say about Akron Public Schools. So that was very busy. Those couple days felt like a couple of weeks being there, but I think we made some ground, very good ground there on the hill, Capitol Hill, for Akron Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple things, handful of things, because it's been three weeks, I think, since OSBA, now, but attended the Akron Community Foundation Program that was at the Red Cross Building where we heard from the Summit Education Initiative, their cradle career, and from Rachel Teca about the Career Academies there as well. Not really new information for me, but I went more to hear the questions from the community. Curious what the community is thinking and asking as we move forward in that and what SEI has helped. I attended a school negotiations workshop. It was very informative. It's something I'd recommend my peers attend if they haven't already. Akron Council PTA, they had their annual meeting, their past, present, and future, and they gave out their Silver Acorns and other awards to teachers. We actually had Akron Public School administrative staff get awarded. I don't know if that's ever happened before. I asked that, and they couldn't remember if that had happened before or not, but I would, with all the teachers here, if you'd go back to your schools, I would love to see more schools get involved in our Akron Council PTA. There's some openings on their board for liaisons from each school. It's very important if you're a high school and your PTA is not a member of Akron Council PTA, your students are not eligible for all the different Akron Council PTA scholarships that are available as well. So I recommend everybody go back to their schools and really get involved with the PTA in your building. Went to the Breakfast Club. It's held monthly at South Street Ministries. This month was focused on Deborah Mantiki and Project Rise and partnerships that they have with, I believe it's Trinity Lutheran that's up along Grace Park. And there's also a new 501(c)(3), and it's named after Deborah's initials. I can't remember her middle initial now, but it's like DLM, and it also stands for something else, but it's a food pantry that's in the basement of Trinity Lutheran. It was interesting talking about people who need a food, and they're not just Akron Public Schools. Project Rise is, obviously. I don't think the food pantry is, but they even talked about the food desert that the University of Akron could be. You know, some students who go to school without any, they eat ramen for breakfast, for lunch, and dinner every day, they're looking at that as well. Very interesting program. Went to an OSBA leadership program on student achievement. This is a new focus for OSBA. It's a relatively new program. There was a former superintendent. Her name was Julie Smith Miller, easy for me to remember there. I'm sorry, and I didn't even say it right. It was Kim Smith Miller, rhyming with Tim Miller. I couldn't even get that right. But anyway, it was very interesting. Talked about strategic planning, talked about vision. One thing that's interesting, which I think we are doing now in Akron Public Schools, that one of the little buzz phrases that stuck with me is, "Don't plan the budget, budget the plan." I think Brian and our superintendent, David, do a very good job at doing that and hope to move forward with that. And the last thing, I went to the Bookdole, Kenmore Garfield Women's City Series Championship. It was an awesome game. I took my wife, and she said it was an awesome game, and she likes basketball. And it was back and forth. It was a game of runs. Bookdole was victorious by, I think, by nine points, but it was very fun basketball.
For the record, I'm not sure that Katie likes basketball.
Okay.
You know, it's hard to believe that there's still more, that without repeating anything that's already been said that some of us attended together, the same night as the Akron Community Foundation presentation, Ms. Winters was out at East presenting to 8th grade parents on the College and Career Academies, and I got to stop out there. Tuesday musical group put together, brought in a teaching opportunity for students, understanding science through metaphor, and I got to go over and watch at NIFSTEM as that was taught to the students. That was fantastic. Congressman Tim Ryan came into STEM High School and recognized those students that we had at the board last time around, got to take photos with them. They were thrilled. Their parents, who had been here before, were also just really moved. He was impressed with the STEM High School and with Akron Public Schools because he said, you know, "We put these things out here, and a lot of times, not a lot of schools apply." So he was not only thrilled with the app, which was, if you didn't catch that, that was on fighting the opioid epidemic, but he was thrilled with that, but he was also thrilled that these students had taken such a great initiative with their teacher who was at the meeting last month and shared with us that he'd lost a family member to this epidemic. So he was very moved by that. The Cleveland Orchestra performance at Firestone High School for the Akron School of the Arts students and IB students was amazing. I got to sit with the superintendent at that. It was probably the most relaxing part of the last three weeks that we got to experience that. On that vein, I'd like to remind board members that it is the in-the-rounds week or two weeks, so check your calendars. Ruth was lovely enough to send all those reminders out to us. And then last, but certainly not least, the Science Fair. Somehow managed to be the only board member there shaking hands. Usually, there's three or four of us, a lot of hands to shake. Katrina Halasa did a fantastic job. There are a few technical issues, but the staff and all of the teachers and Katrina rallied together to make everything work well. Did you get to go before the presentation?
No, I just, we had little goody bags.
Yes, we have goody bags from Katrina, as usual. She does a great job of taking care of us. But just fantastic, just some of the, just the titles of the winning Science Fair projects were just amazing, and the ones that I did get to see just knock your socks off. So look out, world, here comes Akron Public Schools.
I'm disappointed that I didn't get to make it because the projects really usually go, I mean, it really feels like you were just walking in at the collegiate level with some of those kids and their projects, but...
Truly.
As always, thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing, for bringing that back and sharing that with us. Because of, most of the things have been already mentioned, I'm going to not give any of your school reflections tonight. And that brings us to our request to address the board. I also want to, while we're waiting on Pat Shipe to come up, I also want to acknowledge our friend and former colleague, Ms. Veronica Sims, Councilwoman Veronica Sims is joining us tonight. Thanks for being here. Byron Arledge, Reverend Byron Arledge. Hi, good to see you. Thanks for being here. Joining us tonight for a request to address the board is Pat Shipe from the Akron Education Association. And you are ready. Let's check the floor is all yours. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pat Shipe, and I'm the president of the Akron Education Association. I would like to thank the members of the board for the opportunity to speak here tonight regarding this very serious issue of classroom and school safety. In addition to the AEA officers, AEA board members, our building representatives and members, we are joined by Stephen Santangelo, Local 1, Service Employees International Union and its members. We are also joined by Sheila Dawkins Flynn and members of the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, Local 689. Also present is Lola Booker Brewer and members of the Association of Classified Personnel and Jerry Yancoke, representing Ohio Association of Public School Employees, Local 778. Both inside and outside of this building are educators, secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, and cafeteria workers. We are joined by educational aides and assistants, office support staff, and PTA members. Joining us are psychologists, speech and physical and occupational therapists, and we are also supported, but here tonight, by students, parents, spouses, families, and community members. By being here tonight, we hope to underscore the seriousness of incidents surrounding the safety of students and staff within our classrooms and buildings. Back as far as the late 80s and early 90s, AEA and past administrations worked in close and respectful cooperation to negotiate and implement procedures within both the collective bargaining agreement and the district's code of student behavior to ensure that all stakeholders had a voice in applying those practices, which would safeguard the well-being of all of our students and staff within our school building and would secure the best possible learning environment for our students. This language specifically addresses procedures which are to be taken by the administration when either verbal or physical assaults are carried out by students on teachers and staff. As you are aware, and contrary to recent remarks made by this administration, the collective bargaining agreement is not a teacher contract, but rather a negotiated, shared document in which both the board and AEA sign and agree to adhere. AEA and our members, with the cooperation of prior administrations, went decades without filing a single assault grievance. We went decades. Much of that success was due to authentic collaboration between the board and AEA through the Expulsion Review Committee. This committee was so successful, in fact, that the board requested, the school board requested more teacher involvement in reviewing expulsion outcomes. We believe that the current administration, however, has taken away our participation in this practice by rarely, if ever, convening this committee and by drastically scaling back our participation in this process. In addition, AEA not only recognizes the legal and due process rights of students with disabilities afforded by both federal law and the Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act, but we absolutely encourage this administration to apply those rights to students who assault teachers and staff. We maintain that in many cases, this process has not occurred. Unfortunately, in the last several years, we believe the current administration is not implementing these procedures and, as a result, have left our students and educators exposed to unsafe and untenable teaching and learning environments. While there is little doubt that tackling the issues surrounding disruptive student behaviors is a multi-layered challenge, which should involve students, parents, families, and community members, we feel that the balance of burden to solve these issues is being placed squarely and almost solely at the doorstep of our educators by this administration. We feel that this approach taken by this administration, quite frankly, has become indefensible. I wish to be very clear, we find ourselves at this point here tonight because of serious behaviors committed by a small percentage of students against our educators and certainly wish to acknowledge the majority of our students who come to school every day, ready to learn. In our opinion, it is quite irresponsible for this administration to infer that our teachers would speak out in this manner over behaviors which do not rise to the level of serious nature. Our teachers have not and will not file a grievance over simple name-calling. In our opinion, it is quite disrespectful to infer that we would. It is our belief that these remarks by the administration is simply an attempt to trivialize this matter and deflect attention off of the true urgency of this issue. That being said, I would like to acknowledge President Patrick Bravo and the announcement that he made and this board's recent formation of a committee to look at student discipline, school safety, and building climate. AEA remains willing to always discuss issues which so greatly impact our students. We must point out, however, that AEA's acknowledgement of the formation of yet another study committee does not in any way address or end the very serious and dangerous concerns which we are presenting to you tonight. In our opinion, it is critical that the board take immediate action to enforce the district's code of student behavior and the provisions and language negotiated within the collective bargaining agreement, a document which both AEA's leadership and this board agreed to and signed. We ask that you now honor that commitment. AEA will always be open to respectful, inclusive communication with this board in the hope of productive collaboration, which positively impacts our students. Absent the authentic and realistic efforts, however, we will continue to be proactive and determined gatekeepers to protect the well-being and success of our students and educators. And I thank you for listening to me tonight. I'm happy to take any questions, ask you that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say, you know, normally when we have requests to address the board, the board does not respond at the time that the individual or the group addresses the board, but I did want to say something tonight, and I had the opportunity to at least meet several of you tonight and let you know that we hear you and that we appreciate the time that you took to come down here and to share your concerns with the board. And you know, and I hope that you know, that we take your safety, the safety of students and staff, very seriously. But I'm also confident, and we've been talking for some time now, I'm confident that we can find a way to work through this together and move forward in a positive and productive way, and I do look forward to continuing to talk to each of you. So thank you again for coming down.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we do have a presentation tonight on the College and Career Academies of Akron, an update from Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods and also our Student Achievement Instructional Policy Committee. So with that, we will go. Why don't we recess for about two minutes? I know some folks probably need to tear down and probably head out, so let's recess for about two minutes.
Our district focus in Akron Public Schools is to ensure that we're providing rigorous teaching and learning, safe learning engagement. And with the academy transformation, we're really looking at trying to change some of the results that we're asking for our graduates to have, right? So we've talked a lot about the fact that we want our graduates to have the 21st century skill sets, that high graduation rate, being able to enter college remediation free, and we really believe College and Career Academies is the transformation needed to help us get there. Tonight's 10-minute, kind of brief, update to the community is really centered around Focus Area 3. We're going to spend our time today really talking about public engagement and how we're collaborating and engaging our business and community partners to really help us structure really meaningful experiences for our students. We're going to review our goals for College and Career Academies. We're going to share some of the structures that we're using to engage our business and community partners, and lastly, provide you some next steps with the academies. And lastly, provide you some next steps with the academies. Just to remind everyone where our goals are, right? We're looking at making sure that, once we're full implementation with College and Career Academies, we're producing graduates with the skills that you see on this visual, right? Interestingly enough, we're not talking about ACT scores so much, as we're making sure that we're building critical thinkers, right? Students that are able to really be successful upon graduation, whether it is they choose to go to college, they go to work, or they go to the military. Reminding all of us that academies are really focused on transferable skills, making sure that we're choosing pathways in academies that are interesting to students so that we tap into their engagement, right? We want to make sure that they're learning all of those professional soft skills that they can take from their experiences in high school and go wherever it is they choose to go upon graduation. We also really emphasize this idea of on and off ramps for every academy and pathway, making sure that every student may not know their lifelong plan right away, but whatever pathway that they choose, have the ability to go to school, go to work, or be enlisted in the military. At this time, I'd like to introduce two members of our team that are working on business and community engagement. Beth Winter is our coordinator. She's an Akron Public School employee in charge of partner engagement. And Angie Beresford, the director of College and Career Academies with United Way of Summit Academy. And I think Beth's going to...
I am. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Beth Winter. And one of the wonderful things that we have through our College and Career Academies is it's been a very thoughtful and careful planning process, working alongside our key community partners. And I'm going to go over those partners with you very briefly. But the first one I want to reference is the GAR Foundation. So the GAR Foundation has been one of the major funders for the research and the infrastructure necessary to do this transformation to the College and Career Academies. We've also worked very closely with Canexus NEO. For those of you that know the background, you know we've had about 1,500-plus people involved in the planning and the development of this program. And some of the information they used to develop the pathways that our students will be choosing from came from Canexus, as they looked and provided us with data about high-wage, high-demand positions in northeast Ohio, and that formed the basis for the pathways. We also work very closely with United Way. In a moment, you're going to hear from Angie here, who is our partner broker. They recruit partners that we work with for the schools, establish those agreements, they monitor and also record that engagement. We also work with Summit Education Initiative, who looks at student data, provides support with issues that we may have as we move along on this path. And then finally, of course, the Greater Akron Chamber, who provides support for this transformation through advocacy. So these are key community partners, and yet there are many more people that we're going to work with that I'm going to talk about in just a second. Before I do that, though, I want to give you just a little bit of background of how this whole system works. So Angie and I and Rachel, we work very closely. We are actually, Angie and I are on a high school tour right now. We're going around, meeting with all the principals, the pathway specialists, the administrative staff, the custodial staff, the student ambassadors, to really understand the schools and their needs around this transformation to College and Career Academies. What partners do they want? And what services do they need? What help do they need? So that is part of our discovery phase, where we identify those partners. So a school may tell us, gosh, we would love to partner with such and such organization. Angie then will start doing that research to identify key partners that we can go and talk to, do that background research, set up a meeting with them, where we present what the College and Career Academies are and what they mean, and then ideally align them with the school. So this could be taking them to tour one or more schools in our district so that they feel the culture there and see if it's a good fit for them. And then with that engagement, we have them meet the academy coach, we sit down and make a plan, and of course, celebrate that engagement. What you see here, Opportunities for Engagement, that is just a short list. And we always tell our potential partners that it's really limited only by imagination because there are so many different ways they can engage with our students, either at the schools or our students going out to their place of business. But whether it's serving on advisory board, a field trip, guest speaker, and so on, there are many different ways that we want to get people involved. And Angie, I'm sure will reference this, but we haven't had any partner saying no to us yet. People are so excited about working with our students and our schools. This is a great, great transformation for us. So finally, I want to just reference these other groups, community groups that we're involved with. These are all partners of ours. Our steering committee, if you look at all our pathways, they can be divided into these five industry sectors, and we have representatives from each of those sectors serving on our steering committee. We meet four times a year, one of which is a full day they give up, a full-day retreat to oversee our implementation of the master plan. We also have the CEO Champion Group, which will be started here in the near future. The Industry Partnership Council, again, these are people from the various industries making sure we're going to be able to meet those workforce demands. And then the academy advisory boards, we have the ones at North up and running, and then this semester, we'll be starting all the other academy advisory boards. These are people that come in from the various partners, look at our curriculum, does it meet the industry standards? Do the schools have what they need? And what opportunities can we provide our students? So there's a lot of involvement, a lot going on. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Angie, who's going to tell you more.
Thank you. I'm a little disappointed the cameras are gone. I thought I'd be able to do this. So the reason why I'm here, everyone asks, I work for United Way, but I do work on behalf of the Akron Public College and Career Academies. And the reason we're kind of intertwined is last spring, if you might recall, United Way released their four bold goals for 2025. My position and what I do is directly related to bold goal number two, and that is to increase the four-year graduation rate from currently around 75% to 90%, and the college and career readiness rate that is currently around 21% up to 60%. And the way we're going to do that is by engaging our students through their pathways and bringing real-world experiences into the classroom by engaging with our business and community partners. So, United Way, because we have an extensive network and background with businesses and community organizations already, due to our being in the neighborhoods and in the community for this year is our 100th anniversary, by the way. So I serve as the partner broker to bring into the schools, again, whatever the pathway teachers might need, whatever the principals need. I just met with a principal two weeks ago, and he said, I really would like this company to offer students part-time jobs. Called the company, met with them, and they said, absolutely. And that is the fun thing I get to do every single day, is fulfill those needs and those wish list items that the teachers and the administrators bring to me. I don't know how to do that. I'll do it. So just a great example of involvement, community involvement and collaboration, excuse me. January 19th, we had a career fair at North High School. We had over 50 tables represented, 50 different career titles, orthotic technician, YMCA preschool teacher, environmentalist from the Cogu Valley National Park. You can see here all the companies that said yes to us. And I didn't beg anyone. I didn't have to. They willingly brought sometimes two or three people to represent two or three career titles, anywhere from the tech community, which is desperate for skilled labor, to healthcare. We have so many opportunities in the Akron area for healthcare. HVAC, again, another skilled trade that desperately needs people. So our ninth graders, the 200 that came through the career fair, got to talk to all of these people. They picked five tables to visit, to ask questions about what do you have to do to get into this career? What should I study? What skills are needed? And so forth. So there is no lack of excitement and participation on behalf of the business community, I can tell you that. They're ready to step up to the table, and that is a very exciting thing for all of us because this is going to help our students excel, graduate on time, and be ready to enroll and list or employ.
I just wanted to point out that this is the new website and that we're utilizing that to really showcase our business partners on our website. Thank you, Patrick Bravo. Oh, sorry. Okay. No, you're good. So I want to share with you just a few of the next steps. With partner engagement, we're looking at bringing in business and community partners to really start to serve on that academy advisory board so that we can decide what that curriculum and course sequence needs to be, as well as industry credentials that we want to make sure students are earning within that pathway. Our academy coaches have been interviewed, so we think we'll be, in the next few weeks, be able to name our academy coaches at each high school. And that we are absolutely out recruiting partners from, you know, mom-and-pop small companies to large organizations and everybody in between. Sometimes the message gets lost when we're talking about College and Career Academies and how major industries or big companies are who we want at the table. I just want to make sure that I communicate that effectively. We want everybody. We want anybody and everybody who's interested in supporting our kids and experiences with time and talent, including small organizations. So we're out recruiting, and Angie and Beth, that's pretty much their sole responsibility to make sure our buildings have what they need and our kids have great experiences. I'm going to turn it over to the Instructional Policy Committee to give some updates.
Thanks. You'll all look at your places. We have two important items for you to review tonight, reminding you that this is currently a draft, but that action will be taken probably in the next few weeks. We'll be looking for your feedback. So if you take a look at the one that's on the cardstock that has the academy, that's where we're going to start first. So we're pleased to share with you the recommended names for our College and Career Academies across all of the high schools. This board previously approved all of our college and career pathways, and then our academy teams in each of the high schools took the approved pathways and combined them into three to five to make learning communities based on career pathways that make sense together. Each academy will have approximately 300 students. After the academy teams determined which pathways would be combined, they recommended a name for the academy. We're distributing this list simply for your review tonight, so please, again, look it over over the next two weeks, giving feedback to myself or Ginger, or if you have questions, asking Rachel or Dr. McWilliams Woods. And we'll bring them back to the board next time for your consideration. I'm not going to read all of them to you. I just, first of all, want to give kudos to the team for putting this together. I think it reads incredibly well. I think it's very easy to understand. You can see how many academies are in each building. You can see how they are grouped together. I also want, I know that this kind of got out last week, but I just wanted to thank the superintendent again for his consideration on the Kenmore Garfield Culinary Arts group that, you know, we brought that to him when we had our meeting at East and asked for a second look at that, and that was done. So I want to give him a thanks for taking that into consideration because it was something that was really important to the board. But if you have any questions about how these are grouped together, or if it doesn't read as clearly to you, you know, I know for Rachel, I'm sure that you see this in your sleep. So I know that I'm getting fairly close to that at some points, too. So just give us some feedback on that. And Ginger?
Okay. Our second item is a template. And this is for partner integration with our College and Career Academies. The superintendent and the board has been working very diligently to line up partners for each pathway. Over the past three months, our staff worked with the board, NGL consultants, Nashville coaches, legal counsel, and Business Affairs Executive Director to create a template for any partner who wants to be a premier supporter of an academy, similar to the children's hospital at North. And you can see that on this particular graph. And the template outlines the responsibilities of both the partner and the district. It, for example, under duties and responsibilities, say we plug in a children's hospital, it would be, "Children Hospital provides APS with a license to use the name and intellectual property of children's hospitals, with all such uses to be approved in advance by children's hospitals." So it's just that simple. And there's several other criteria for which that will take place that's here. And I would like, we would like, the board to please forward any feedback to us over what you've heard over the course of the next two weeks, and then we'll bring the template back and to the full board next time for your consideration. So, thank you.
Any questions with regard to College and Career Academies or partner engagement?
Of course, I would have to be the one to ask the question. Since you guys have visited the schools already, how many students and how many parents maybe have you spoke with? And what was their feedback that they gave to you?
So the visits we've been doing so far, and we just started a couple of weeks ago, have been meeting with principals, and we're starting now our meetings with the pathway, excuse me, the pathway teachers and with the principals. So what I have been doing along with Rachel is we've been doing community meetings. We've got one set up at every middle school from, we started last September, October, and it'll be through June. And so we are meeting with students and parents there. And I think, from my experience, it's been overwhelmingly positive. There certainly have been questions, but we've been able to address any concerns they've had, and at least they've left me feeling pretty good. I would say you have the same experience.
Is there anything in particular that they, maybe they all kind of rallied around?
You know, I think they, you know, there's a lot of questions about the differences in each school, what each school had to offer, and how we came to those decisions, and what if they wanted a pathway outside of their home school. All of those kind of logistical questions were really more of the probably October, November kind of questions. Right now, those don't seem to be an issue. They've kind of been answered, but I'm sure the next wave will be coming with questions.
And then my last question is, I noticed we said we had, on the slide presentation, we had 50 schools or 50 companies at North. How many do we have thus far for the district? Does that, as you guys know?
So it was more like, not 50 companies, 50 career titles represented. We probably had 25 companies or so. I don't have a number because we're finalizing all the academies, and so we haven't signed all our partnership agreements, but I've met with well over 50 companies, well over 50, and I've not gotten one no.
One of the things that's so important to us is equity for our entire district, and so looking at making sure we have large, small, mid-size, different types of partners for all the different schools. So we've been very cognizant of actually mapping that out, looking at, as we finalize, had the pathways approved and all that, looking at, so where's a large company that would fit here, where's this mid-size, and so on, so that we make sure that we look at that district-wide.
Sure. And I think now that we have the academies almost named, once it gets approved, it's going to be easier to kind of figure out where people are going to fall. We've been waiting for this last piece to fall in place and then we can get moving.
Thank you.
So you mentioned the steering committee and a few of the other places where people can get involved. We just had 57 people step forward who said they want to be a part of this board, and there's only one seat at this table. So there are going to obviously be some people that we have found out are interested in being a part of Akron Public Schools. Are there, is there room for this board to recommend some people your direction? Is there anything that we can, you know, or if people apply for that and we don't even necessarily know that they might, they may still step forward to do some of those things?
Absolutely. And that's kind of Angie's responsibility as the partner broker. Everything's going to roll through Angie, so we have one point of contact, but we really are counting on the power of the network, you know? Hopefully that people are talking to other people who want to kind of get hooked into our schools and what our kids can do and move out from there. But absolutely, I don't think there's, at this time, we're not at anywhere close to capacity.
And you use the word equity. Equity not just simply in businesses, mom-and-pop, in huge Fortune 500 businesses, but equity in, when we look at our schools, to make sure there are some schools that need a bit more attention than other schools. And to highlight because that has an impact on our community. So that, I hope that those kinds of things, as we're looking at these partners, would also be, you know, we would pay attention to that as well.
Absolutely. And I think that was one of the fundamental reasons why I asked Angie to Beth to start the tour of our high schools, so that they got a deep understanding of the culture and the needs of each building, because they're going to need to, you know, work with me to be strategic as to, you know, where are they going to best fit and how are they going to help our kids in the best way? So, thank you. Mr. Mel?
Yeah, a couple of questions. You mentioned those 200 students who went through the career fair.
Yes.
How many seemed interested?
I can speak, I can speak from this. So the way the career fair worked was, I had half of the freshmen with me for a 45-minute front-loading session, the other- front-loading session, the other half at the career fair, and then they flip-flopped. The preparation that the students had, ready to engage with our business partners, was definitely a huge step up from last year's career fair. The engagement was there, the preparation with questions, professionalism. I can say that from being the former principal at North, to what I saw this time, it was noticeably different. I think they're starting to see the connection to their future and why this matters to them.
Do we have, to use better words, things in place for the students who seem checked out and just going through the motions because it's a school day and a half to do there? I mean, what are we doing to recognize the kid that, you know, maybe is not showing enthusiasm? Somehow we show them enthusiasm?
Right. And I think the more that they get to work with non-APS people, they start to step up a little bit more. Do you want to speak to that? Because you two were in the career fair.
Yeah, we spent...
It was very interesting. I loved seeing the students that came with their papers prepared. They had to choose questions that they were going to ask and choose booths that they wanted to visit. And so I'm, I would say the vast majority were prepared to do that, and we were helping direct them to. And those that weren't less than prepared, we helped them find booths in various areas and make sure that they got from one to the next one. So we got them a little taste of skilled trade and a little taste of IT and a little, and various places around. So we helped them along. But it was by far, the most were very prepared. And, you know, our, the business partners that came, they stepped up. We had cookies and we had swag bags that these kids left with. They had, they went, they thought this was a great day. So, yeah, we were very fortunate, they did well.
And then the question I said I was going to ask, and maybe that comes back another time. I'm very curious to what we're learning is working and is not working, and how that's going to apply to the other schools.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, commend the board in the strategicness of their decision to make North go first. I think we've learned so much from their implementation of what's working, what we could do differently when we go to the next implementation phase. Probably my biggest takeaway from North is how important scheduling is. You know, with North, it's always a little bit more complicated if you have students learning English as a second language. That scheduling is even more complicated. But if you want purity to academies, and you want students to feel a part of a small learning community, and you want teachers to talk about kids, you have to get the schedule right. So I'd tell you, that would be my number one piece that we would do differently.
Well, I'm just glad to hear about the business partners who are willing to give our students jobs, because that was a real concern of mine. So I'm glad to hear that, that they're open, you know, open and willing to take our students once they go through the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One from...
Brian's talking to him, but you, yeah.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Stop there. Any other questions for Ms. Teck?
All right. We are going to move forward, and Ms. Teck is going to come back for your question.
Okay. Next item of business approval of the meeting minutes for both the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2018, as well as the special meeting minutes for January 27th, 2018. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
The motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Next item, superintendent's recommendations.
Well, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 50 personnel recommendations, but I'm pulling item number 35 because that person decided to accept an employment offer elsewhere. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form. And before moving approval, I'd like Kathy McVey to introduce a new member to our staff.
Would you like to stand, please? Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you William White. Mr. White is a 1999 graduate of our Garfield High School. He began his Akron Public Schools career in April 2008 as a five-hour custodian. And in just a year and a half, he moved up to an eight-hour custodian. He also earned a state of Ohio Royalty license and then became an assistant custodian. Since August of 13, Mr. White's been in the buildings and grounds department as a custodian. The supervisor, Matt Frame, puts it this way, "Mr. White is the go-to guy for whatever needs done." From subbing for head custodians to care and maintenance of our vacant buildings to snow removal, lots of snow removal, Mr. White can be counted on to get the job done. When he's out of work, he enjoys working with the Greater Akron Aquarium Society, serving on their board of directors, and he also creatively maintains their website. At this time, I'd like to recommend him for a position of head custodian, night supervisor for custodial services.
I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with all of our custodians at night, keeping Akron the best it can be and making it even better.
I'm glad I gave you a bag.
Yep. The white has it.
All right, then, Mr. President, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Teck? We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any questions, discussions, or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes, abstaining from items 43 and 44.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining from item 45.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 46.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from items number 47 and 48.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, and I'm abstaining from a number that I don't know. Number 50 and 49. Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from items number 41 and 42.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and seven resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
I'm going to say one thing before you go into the superintendent's report.
Yes. I forgot earlier, thank Dr. McWilliams Woods for giving the data that we had to take to Washington DC. It was very, very helpful. We did say we were going to send it to the Congresswoman's office as well as Senator Brown's office because they wanted this information. It's very, very good. So I want to thank you, as well as anybody who helped you get this information, because it was the team, thank you team, this is valuable information. I'm sorry, I had to make sure. They helped.
Superintendent's report?
Just one thing, I have writer's cramp. I finished State of the Schools draft, and Mark Williamson kept trying to change that address tomorrow, and it's at Tangier, not at the University of Akron Quaker Station. So it's at the Martin, I mean, at Tangier tomorrow.
For the president's report, I don't know, it's been a pretty slow week or two for us, not much going on. So I don't know that I have. State of the Schools, looking forward to that tomorrow, always a treat to be part of that. Again, I want to thank the staff and everyone for coming tonight to share their concerns with us, looking forward to working with them. Our biggest item, of course, has been recently too, or competing for attention, there is the open seat that we had. 57 applicants, and we spent a good chunk of Saturday going through those in order three times in a row, I believe, three times in a row. We did have two candidates withdraw. We had one that appears to live outside of the district. We provided information to our media partners, and, but we are, we do still have, we've reached out, poor Marilyn, her, she's probably got writer's cramp, too, from getting all of the information out to our candidates, the information that you saw that I copied you on last night as we communicate with those folks. We were able to narrow down from 54 to 17 candidates that we will interview this coming Saturday. We will begin our meeting at 8:30 in the morning. We will start interviews at 8:45. Our last interview will be at 5:15. And so we are breakfast, lunch, and dinner here, and so we'll see you there. Yeah, you can come in your pajamas. We won't hold that against you. But we are waiting to release those names until, we have two candidates that we have not been able to contact yet. So we have not publicly released the names yet, but the rest of that. So we will interview February 17th, and we will have a special meeting on Tuesday, February 20th, at 4:30 in the afternoon, to appoint and install the new board member ahead of our 30-day deadline. So really, that's all for my president's report tonight. Any questions?
As always, this is very difficult and trying time. I want to thank the public for their response, but we want to thank the president and his leadership in organizing things in such a way that makes at least we're able to shift our schedules around, to take care of the busy work that we have to do. And we know it's not easy, so I want to thank you for hoping to move us along so we can get this process done in a meaningful and effective way. And I think we have demonstrated to the public, we want to be transparent, we want to give people opportunity, and we chose this avenue to do just that, so that we can let people know, you know, we had other options, but we chose this is the way we want to do it. And because of that, 57 people responded. And we netted a little bit down, as the president said, and now we will meet on the 17th. Well, I can't say, we'll meet on the 17th.
At your point, do you want to say something about, I mean, as the candidates start to find out?
Right. Yeah, one of the things that, first of all, it was incredibly difficult, so to take, what did we start out with, after our second round? I think we still had over 25, was somewhere around, so we cut it in half. So it was no easy task to get it down to what we did, but it had to be manageable so that we could make some sense and not, people are there idiots. But one of the things that we came to was that several of the people would make excellent committee members, or we would love to find ways to keep some of these folks involved if they truly are interested in being involved in the schools, and they got a no. I know that there was something in the email that went out, or the phone call that went out, that told them how they could do that. So I would definitely encourage some of the people that unfortunately had to be a no, you know, to please her out.
I mean, to Reverend Walker's point, there are 57 applicants in one seat.
Right.
And so unfortunately, we're going to hurt some feelings, but we do want to make sure that if people, as you said, are interested, I mean, I probably don't want to blast it out there, but I gave them my personal cell phone number, so call me.
No, I'm not one of them.
Tell me if you want to, yeah. If you, to your phone, if you really want to be involved, we'll find a way to plug you in and, you know, we'll say no to no one, so. All right, any other questions? If not, that's it for my president's report. Treasurers' report?
No report.
Committee reports, legal contracts and board policies.
Presenting for the third and final reading and requesting approval tonight is revised policy 3215, use of tobacco by professional staff. Revised policy 4215, use of tobacco by classified staff. Revised policy 5512, use of tobacco. Revised policy 5530, drug prevention. Revised policy 7434, use of tobacco on school premises. And revised policy 9160, public attendance at school events. And we're asking for approval of these policy provisions this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the third and final reading of the policies that were read. Any questions or discussions on those policies? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
With that, we will take...
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................